City Council, and what I'd like to do first is I would like to ask Counselor Hill to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My pledge to lead us is to the flag of the United States and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under our invisible great liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Hill. This is a time, as part of our regular meetings, that we invite citizens to come to us and provide public comment on anything they'd like to talk about. We do have a couple of limitations, though, and it's hard to read, but it's up on your board. If a topic is already on our agenda, we ask you to wait until that agenda item to speak to the council. If the city is currently in a matter of litigation with a party, a firm, or a company, we will not be able to discuss that in open session. If it's regarding a quasi-judicial land use matter, such as a zone change, or if it's a matter scheduled for any public hearing at some future date, we will inform you of that, and we will not be able to discuss that. And, of course, depending on the length of the comments, we always ask that you limit your comments if possible, and that if there's multiple people who would like to comment on the same issue, just please not to repeat anything that the previous person said. So that being said, I'd invite anybody who would like to speak to the council on anything to come forward, state your name for the digital record, and sign in for the hard copy record. So is there anybody who'd like to speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing none, let me say one more time, is there anybody who'd like to speak to the council on anything that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and we'll move forward. Counselors, as part of our agenda, you were considered the minutes of April 12, 2016, city, county, and regular meetings as part of our consent agenda, and also Resolution Number 2016-49, and that has authorized and proven amendments to the loan agreement between the State of Oregon, acting by and through its Department of Transportation, ODOT, and the City of McMinnville Municipal Corporation of the State of Oregon, further known as McMinnville, dated July 1, 2013, referred to as the loan agreement. So, counselors, we have two things on our consent agenda tonight. Is there anything that the council would like pulled from our consent agenda for discussion? Or just a question? So Kevin, you'd like something pulled for discussion?
I think that the Resolution 2016-49 should be taken out of the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a request that we remove Resolution 2016-49 out of the consent agenda by Commissioner or Counselor Jeffries. So by that, we will go ahead and remove that, and we will bring it up after our consent agenda. So that leaves our consent agenda just with the minutes of April 12, 2016, city council dinner, and regular meetings. Do we have any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Hill. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, my Counselor Mankie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you opposed? Hearing none, we did have a request that we move Resolution Number 2016-49 from the consent agenda up for discussion by the council. So at this time, before we get into our joint work session, I will open that resolution up for discussion, and I'll turn it over for any questions or comments to Council President Jeffries. So Kevin.
Yeah, thank you. I just felt that, given the magnitude of that particular loan agreement, that it should be something that we discussed a little bit more detail. Looking over the information provided in the packet, it wasn't clear how much money was being transferred over to the Phase Two part of it. I just wanted to kind of clear the air, make sure that we understand what the commitment is, and yeah, so with that said.
Okay, I think we have somebody that can explain that very well, and he's sitting in the audience tonight, our Parkway Committee Chair, Yamal County Parkway Committee Chair and bypass guru. So I'll ask David, and he's already sitting down there. David, if you can state your name again, you've already signed in.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Dave Hagerburg, Chair of the Yamal County Parkway Committee. Mr. Chair Stewart, or Stewart rather, and then the members of the commission and city council. The question that you asked is, let's go back to just a little bit. Originally, in the funding agreement for the first phase, the local entities plus the Confederate tribes put up $20 million. Of that 20, 16 of it came from the local governmental entities, and of that, McMinnville's share was $3,209,000. And that money was funded by the different entities borrowing the money from the ODOT Infrastructure Bank and entering into this loan agreement that we're talking about. And that money was then pledged as a part of that to be drawn down as the bypass is constructed. The money was drawn against all the different entities and ODOT's money to pay for the project as it was going forward and as you've seen it being built. So as a result of that, what's happened is that the project cost for the first phase from this side of Dundee to Highway 219 ended up being less than were projected in the total cost of the project. And the way the loan agreements were written, the money was drawn down as it is being spent. So ODOT has now said, we are comfortable that when we get all done, we will have at least $10.5 million of that original 200 and some million that we won't be spending on this first phase. And that money is about 90% ODOT's money, and it's about 10% money that the local entities wouldn't borrow and wouldn't have to pay off over time. So back to your first question, then, McMinnville's share of that is about 20%. So it's somewhere, and I asked ODOT and Tim Potter, it's somewhere between 210 and 220,000 dollars of that $3 million of McMinnville's money that wouldn't be spent on the first phase of the project. So the opportunity has come up, as Commissioner Primisic pointed out to you, that the dollars could be used to start to acquire critical right-of-way in the parcels in that piece of the bypass from 219 to Rex Hill. And as you've probably read in the media, a number of those pieces of property have become at risk for development. And in fact, there's one that's been going on right now. Previously, there'd been a conversation about a church, but now that's a conversation about another type of facility. And so ODOT and the Transportation Commission voted to move forward and to put this next phase of the project into the State Transportation Improvement Program, the STIP. That is an incredible step forward. Without that, you go nowhere. And the Transportation Commission, at the meeting in Hood River where Mayor Olson was there, Commissioner Primisic, and the other mayors, the Transportation Commission said, we're willing to put it in there, we'll allocate that $10.5 million to begin acquisition of right-of-way, et cetera. But what we want to know is that our local partners, who also own a piece of that $10.5 million, that 1-plus million, are willing to put their money in also to begin the acquisition of right-of-way and the other things it takes to move that next critical phase forward. And what I would tell you is that when they designed the first phase, the way you'd get from 219 and the bypass where it connects, back up to 99W is on Springbrook Road. And so they're going to three-lane Springbrook Road, and everybody, including ODOT, knows that Springbrook Road is going to fail very soon. It is just literally a Band-Aid that is not going to work very well, but it was the only way they could build first phase and get you up there. So this piece will then replace that impact on Highway 219, on the impact of the project on Springbrook Road. So you say, well, okay, what happens if you don't do it? You will not get anywhere near the total benefit of the bypass if you don't build that next phase. The projections are you'll get a lot of benefit on the truck traffic, but the highway traffic is not a big percentage that will continue to go through Newburgh and Dundee. And so clearly, those entities are very strongly in support of it. And I can tell you, last Tuesday, I was at the city council meetings for both Dundee and Newburgh, and they unanimously passed using these dollars for that next phase, as has Yamal County, as has the Confederate tribe. And then you say, is this a good investment? One of the things we've always worked so hard on on this project is to get support from others than us locals, if you will, to get really truly regional support. And that's what moves projects. And one of the things that happened is that at an MWAAC meeting, the Area Commission on Transportation, I made a presentation, and Commissioner Brentano from Marion County was there, and when he heard about the impact of not building the next phase and Springbrook Road plugging up, that that meant either a great deal of that traffic is going to get diverted, Commissioner Stewart, to tell you, possibly onto Wilsonville Road, but across northern Marion County, on across 219 across the river. And so Marion County Commissioners are very concerned about that, and they unanimously passed resolutions in support of the construction of the next phase of the bypass. Huge to have that support. The Area Commission on Transportation voted unanimously to move this next phase forward and to not start projects and leave them half-completed, as so many have criticized. But more importantly, is so that when you've invested so far $3 million, that you'll get your $3,209,000 worth by finishing that next phase. So this is an incredibly important step to making that happen, and you're putting up about 210 or 220,000 more dollars into that next phase.
I think, Kevin, one of the questions that I've had some of the citizens ask me, and I think it's important, and Dave did a good job of explaining it, is the savings the City of McMinnville realizes from the first phase does not mean that the City of McMinnville would get a check back at the end of Phase One. Alls it does mean is that we just, our bond, what we borrowed from ODOT's Infrastructure Bank, we just would never borrow that amount of money.
Which would free up some of our debt service dollars, correct?
At a certain period of time. And my big concern about it is, is with knowing what is happening to the right-of-way between Springbrook Road and 99W, if ODOT doesn't move forward acquiring that property now, the cost of acquiring that property in the future, that some of it's under a lot of pressure for development, we would never ever be able to acquire that property, so.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. I think if people start building big buildings, the probability of being able to build that next phase goes down dramatically.
I've discussed this part of the bypass with any of the same people that you've mentioned, and obviously the support's there. I would love to see them put their money where their mouth is a little bit. You know, they give this support, they don't want this project, we don't want the traffic going into their county, but you know, they're seeing a negative impact from this if it doesn't work, and we're seeing a positive impact if it does. And I would love to see them play a bigger part in financing some of this, so that, you know, we don't have to be carrying all the weight on this. I mean, McMinnville is quite a distance away from the construction of this bypass, but yet we're one of the largest by per capita, you know, just the size, the fact of our size, we're giving a great deal of money to this. And no surprise to anyone, we're just like many other cities that are facing a bit of a budget crunch right now. So I'm just, I'm really cautious about giving them money to this project going forward. I'm supportive of it, and I want to do it. I just want to make sure that we're being very wise about the money that we have, which is quite limited. So, and my second point is, and it sounds like, and please help me to understand this, but the conversation that was had in Hood River, was there any commitment by the cities to give up, to move that portion of the reserves or the budget surplus, I guess, into the Phase Two? Was that somewhat of an agreement that the cities would do that? If, could you elaborate on that? I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't know kind of what happened.
What the individual mayors commissioners said at that meeting is, if you will put it in the STIP, we will go back to our respective governing bodies and ask them to dedicate those dollars, those savings, to the next phase, and ODOT would then put theirs in. And I think it was made pretty clear to me that ODOT is saying, if you are all really committed and put your money in, we'll put ours in. But if you aren't committed enough, then we'd have to think seriously about ODOT putting its money in. So there was no commitments. Everybody clearly understood that it all had to come back to every governing body for a conversation about it. But, and so that's what brought it to the different entities to have this discussion.
I appreciate that distinction, because if it was the other way, I would have been pretty upset. So I'm glad that there was not, you know, we weren't making this commitment without having a public discussion about it.
And Counselor, I can tell you that every one of the mayors and the commissioner and myself and all of us have been around public bodies along, we know better than to make commitments on behalf of entities that can only be made by the respective governing bodies, and so that was clear. But, you know, ODOT was asking, and what they agreed is to come back here and have this discussion as we're having. I would point out one thing about Marion County. When you think about the incredible benefit of what Marion County brings to this is the number of members of the legislature that touch or are involved with Marion County, including the Senate President.
That's true.
And so if the Marion County Commissioners are saying, go build it, that doesn't mean it's going to get built. But that is an enormous amount of public support that we've not had in the past.
I think, Kevin, one of the things that would be interesting, and I'm not so sure, I think maybe Commissioner Primisic or maybe Commissioner Chair Stewart can answer this better. I'm not so sure what the ability of the Marion County Commissioners would be to fund a transportation project outside their jurisdiction would be. I don't know.
Well, I know Commissioner Brentano was really concerned about that and was wondering why he wasn't brought into the discussion about the change on 219. And they felt like they had not been invited to the party. So as far as whether or not they could voluntarily come to the party at this stage of the game, I really don't know how that would work. I don't know.
I don't think so either.
Commissioner Primisic?
And again, that would take an act of their board, their Board of Commissioners, to do that. I don't believe they've been asked, and I don't know the legal ramifications, spending money. They certainly could authorize that expenditure. And, but they've got considerable projects within their own county lines. Just if I might add a point or two, we've spent a quarter of a billion dollars to date on a project. The City of McMinnville will have the skin in the game of about $3 million. If we do not move forward, if we don't fund the rest of this, that's like flushing that down the toilet for the benefit we're going to get from Phase One. So it's not really a question, the Phase Two's going to come, and we're going to be asked to fund, do our share of funding on that. And this is a down payment, if you will, on that Phase Two. And I think it's critical that if we don't really step up now, the cost of Phase Two is going to grow exponentially. And so the quicker, or the sooner the quicker in that respect. So I think that all of the jurisdictions understand, we made that $20 million commitment. They were able to hopefully have about a million of that retained. And I think we would be less than responsible if we didn't say, look, we put that money out there to build this bypass, use it to build the bypass, and so.
Yeah, I just want to make one last point, and then we can move on, if that's what everyone wants. But the agreement was to fund Phase One, and I think that that's an important distinction. And there's three phases to this, and we've made a commitment to fund Phase One. We're under budget, which is great, and I'm okay with the idea of moving forward. I think the big picture is we should do that. But I don't really feel comfortable moving forward without knowing exactly how much we've saved and what the actual debt services dollars that we could be saving had we not moved that money forward and just not borrowed it or just paid that back to ODOT. So I just think a fiscally responsible thing to do would be to know what those numbers truly are before we throw that, this blank check.
Yeah, David. I'm going to have David address that regarding ODOT's figures and what ODOT is telling the Parkway as far as the final, what we know the funding or the savings would probably be, because they haven't got all the contract and all they do.
Well, you know, until Springbrook's done, there's, you know, that is their best estimate. And I can tell you that ODOT is pretty careful about estimating the savings, that it would be more than realistic. I think, you know, if you put it in the context of $200,000, what you're saving if you don't use those dollars is like the debt service on a house for the next 20 years or whatever length McMinnville did for that at that interest rate. So you can figure out what that is. It's, you know, is it $1,015, $1,200 a month on debt service? It's a pretty low interest rate. That those would be dollars that you wouldn't be paying out of your gas tax revenues over the next 15 years. So in a year, and the payments aren't monthly, in a year, you might be saving $20,000 to $25,000 in debt service. So I mean, that's an order of magnitude. And I'm saying that because ODOT wouldn't give me precise numbers, because until this Springbrook is done, it could turn out that there's slightly more savings, or it could turn out, they may be just wrong, and it may not be that much. So like all entities, they're being pretty careful about that. But that's the order of magnitude. So it's not a, this isn't going to build a lot of projects locally, but it will build some, no question about it. There's always a trade-off. But if you can put in 200,000, and you're the linchpin in making ODOT put in another $9.5 million into the project, and I can give you an example, I've spent most of late this morning and into the afternoon with Senator Bocas's house, talking about various issues. And all of those and the others that are looking at this upcoming legislature and a bill big enough to move some big projects forward are all looking. They'd love an opportunity not to do something, you know, I mean, because there's so many places to go. What we need to do is give them an opportunity to continue to invest in this project, and this is absolutely the ideal one. You know, if the stars ever align, and we talked about this under our lobbying efforts, it's the legislative efforts and the efforts that Commissioner Primisic mentioned on the major highway program where we're a high priority corridor. So this is an extraordinary opportunity, and I think there's a lot of people watching it. There's a lot of people who wished we'd drop the ball, because they'd get the money. So, you know.
Yeah, and again, I'm not opposed to that.
Oh, I know that.
I think it's important that we have the numbers out on the table, so everyone understands exactly what's moving.
I think, Kevin, to me, the important part in what this resolution does is, I feel confident that ODOT playing things close to the vest like they do, and they say about $10 million. Again, like Dave said, I can't say if it'll be $2 million or it'll be $17 million, we don't know. But I think the purpose of this resolution is just to say whether it be $2 million in savings, $10 million in savings, or $17 million in savings, that the local partners say whatever savings there is, that will be applied to the property acquisition. Do we know that number? Until Springbrook done, we won't know that. Personally, gut feeling, what I've seen of the bids, my gut feeling, this is just gut feeling, I think it's going to come in higher than $10 million. But I have nothing to base that on, because ODOT doesn't have their figures together yet.
Counselor Jeffries, thank you for calling this item out. I think this is really good discussion. I could be the only person in the room that feels as though they now have a better understanding of the funding for the bypass, but perhaps there are others that feel the same way. You know, the confidence that I have in passing this resolution is that the money that the City of McMinnville felt comfortable borrowing and contributing has not changed. And that if Phase One is to come in under budget, then that's a benefit for everybody, but that there's no additional responsibility that is being put on to the city beyond what we've already obligated ourselves to. And I respect the desire to see the specific numbers, but I also understand that the thinking that a project will come in under budget and whether or not that will actually happen remains to be seen. And I feel very comfortable saying that McMinnville committed to borrow this amount of money, provide it, and that we can move forward with that.
Thank you, thank you, Remy.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, because I could put a couple of numbers on these. The total project amount that's set out in the agreement was $224,102,000. That was the Phase One project cost. And of that, under the loan agreement, the City of McMinnville was borrowing $3,296,600, as Mr. Hagerburg mentioned. Using $10 million as a rough number of project savings, City of McMinnville's share of that would be just under $149,000. So for every $10 million saved, if it's distributed proportionally, the amount that we would not borrow would be about $149,000. Spread out at 2.7% interest could be as little as $9,000 a year in debt service savings. So if that, don't quote me on that, because I'm not a finance guy, I'm not our accountant, but you know, just running the numbers and the percentages here, $10.5 million would be about 4.6% project savings. And so if you just back that off of the city's prior commitment, that gives you a little bit better ballpark.
Thanks.
Thank you, David. So do we have any more comments since we have that around? Larry, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
How about you, Kelly?
No, thank you.
Okay, let's start. Alan, you have any comments?
Just that I support the resolution. I think it's, Mr. Hagerburg's come to our rescue again and educated us a little bit more, or reminded us a lot more of what we're up against here. But I don't think there's too many people that look at the new section that we're building right now, the bypass, and not coming up with the idea, well, won't that work better when there's another phase added on? I haven't driven through that part of the county and not heard that from the person that I've been driving with. Every single time, and I go, yes, it will work so much better. And everybody seems to agree to that, and I agree with Remy in that we've committed our funds, why not move forward and make best use of it right now? And that's to move it forward quickly because of the pressure we're receiving from development along that area. Why not just continue on? So I'm in support of it, and I think it's going to be a big win for us in the future.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Scott?
Kevin, thank you for bringing it out of our consent agenda. We now have a little more of a field, the dollars, but in principle, it was the right thing to do, no matter what the savings is. We've committed it, as Run Media indicated. So, but thank you for bringing it out of consent agenda.
You know, two things for informational items, and before we take a vote on this, I'd like to just add is, when we talk about the needs for McMinnville, the needs for Newburgh, the needs for Dundee, we all have the same needs that drives economic development. But then one of the reasons, when we first started talking about this at our council several years ago, one of the reasons that McMinnville turned out to be the biggest player with the formula worked out is because this is much more of an economical, economic driver to McMinnville and the West Valley, Sheridan, Willamina, everything, than it is to Newburgh. Newburgh and Dundee, it's very important, but it's also a livability issue. Where companies like ADEC or other companies could locate in Newburgh and still be within that magic 45 minutes or one hour, I'm sure Jody could provide us some information, of where you have to be next to a freight corridor. McMinnville cannot be, is not in that. And so that's the first thing, I think. The reason we did it may be a little bit differently, although we also realize that Dundee and Newburgh being our neighbors and our partners, what's good for Newburgh and Dundee is good for McMinnville, what's good for McMinnville is good for Newburgh and Dundee. One of the things that I want everybody to remember is that when we first talked about putting in the bypass, we talked about the bypass, not phases of the bypass. The bypass was from a point going from Dayton, east of Dayton, to the top of Rex Hill. We got into this situation because of funding purposes, where we said, okay, if we were to break this up for construction purposes, how does it make sense to break it up? And so we came up for construction Phase One, construction Phase Two, and construction Phase Three. Two being the Newburgh to 99W, and Three being from the west end of the bypass to the Dayton interchange. But I think we don't want to lose sight that we are still talking about, we will not realize the total benefits until the bypass is completed. Not Phase One, not Phase One or Two, but all three phases. So this, what Dave's bringing, if we have saving, construction savings, which hopefully we'll do on Phase Two, I would hope that all the jurisdictions would take that savings again and roll it right back into what we need to do with Phase Three. So I want everybody to make sure that we understand that we're not talking about Phase One of the bypass or Phase Two of the bypass for more than a construction. We are really talking about the bypass in total. So if we don't have any other comments, I will entertain a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2016-49.
So moved. Okay, second.
We have a so moved by Counsel Rudin, a second by Counsel Mankie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's show the Resolution Number 2016-49 has passed the council unanimously.
And Mr. Mayor, I would just point out that every vote that we've had on the funding of the, from the local entities through this project, you know it's right, because it's been unanimous every time people have, people really have understood. And I just think that's an incredible, incredible statement by McMinnville and the county and the other jurisdictions and your friends, the members of the Confederate tribes have been there unanimously, right there with you all the time. So, great, thank you.
David, I'm going to have you sit right there for a minute, just in case you need, because I know, since you haven't had your beverages, going back and forth may be tiring for you. So that will take us to our next thing, the joint work session with Yamhill County. So Commissioner Chair, I don't know if you, since this is a joint work session, if you need to call the commissioners into formal order for a, since it is a work session, or do you need to call yourselves into order?
No, I don't think we do. I think we're just basically this, we're considering this sort of crashing your party.
That's it. You can crash our party anytime you like.
We're gonna go we're gonna play by your rules tonight
And you can use our room anytime you would like
Did you hear that Laura
Yes I did
Okay
So okay well that being said that takes us into our joint work session with Yamhill County and the first item on the agenda is the Newburg Dundee bypass update I know we have talked a lot about the financing issues with resolution 2016-49 but what I'd like to do is turn it over to anybody David I don't want to know if you just stand I think meaning that you're our transportation chair for Yamhill County if you want to go ahead and lead with this since it is our joint workstation with an update of what's going on
Yes I briefly touched on that in my earlier remarks but and I will be repeating myself we are at a point where ODOT is the final stage of Phase One being the Springbrook connection Phase Two has become a critical issue stepping back just a step we did have one little hiccup when we had the initial connector at 219 it was going to connect they were moving Wilsonville Road to connect at 219 adjacent or directly across from the bypass which was to my way of thinking a very poor design given the fact that Wilsonville Road would have become the default extension of the bypass and some of you maybe all of you have been on Wilsonville Road I don't think any of you would want to see that become a part of the bypass so we did sit down we got the jurisdictions together we hammered out an agreement the the final agreement was about 90 minutes long that it part of Phase Two was moving Wilsonville Road and bringing it into 219 up toward Winuski so what we've done is that is going to happen ahead of the actual completion of two of the bypass Phase Two and thus eliminating that possibility of making that the extension of the bypass in doing that then when we do commit to Phase Two the bypass will continue on behind the where the hospital is there's a lot of work being done and Dave is very integral in that work because of this projected purchase of this piece of property that would build a significant economic tool or engine for Newburg and we certainly want to be supportive of them as much as they would of us because it will be a facility 6 million dollars of construction and approximately 40 family wage jobs and we don't want to push that off the table but it is right in the middle of the right of way so there's a lot of negotiating going on I think it's important to recognize that Ken Austin of Austin Industries has just been tremendous in coming to the table working with the Wertz family to try and do some exchanges of land the the Park and Recreation District over there as much as they hate to they they might have to give up somebody mentioned the other day they can take the second hole and that's fine with me but the golf course may be have may have to be altered a little bit in order to allow the bypass through there and if that's the one they take that's fine but anyway so there's a lot of moving parts to this happening but everybody's got their focus on how critical this is to Yamhill County and the economic development of our entire valley West Valley needs this tremendously but as Jody has pointed out more than once if we don't create a more rapid means of getting raw material in and finished product out it's difficult to get people to consider McMinnville as the place they want to establish a new business or move an existing business so I we've got a lot of a lot at stake here and we've got an opportunity with what we're doing to make this happen is the right away purchase and the extension of Phase One the only issue no we've got significant issues we've got the the west end connector is not ideal to say the least but what we want to do is have a very very focused common voice to take the legislature they're going to be coming up with a transportation package in the 2017 legislature we need to all be talking the same thing we have got to finish Phase Two it's just critical and so if all of the jurisdictions no matter what I know in Dundee they've got their own issues but they're on board with this we crafted a resolution from Parkway Committee that states that is our our primary goal and so if we are if we're all on board we're all connecting with any legislator that we know that we have a relationship with and we're speaking to them in terms of this is absolutely critical to the well being of this county and they need to move forward and this is what we need to do so but we're at a we're at a real critical juncture here in this phasing because we've got to have that right away or we might as well say goodbye to any extension of that bypass then you will see Marion County on board because they'll have to deal with all that traffic coming down 219
That's right
But I don't want to send them there I want to make a more direct route so anyway as far as the as far as the bypass is concerned it is a critical piece Dave is there something I might have left out that you want to
Well, I think it's been well covered I I just want all of you to know that that the Parkway Committee and obviously all of the elected and appointed members of the committee are committed to moving this project forward and we have an extraordinary lobbyist in Michelle Giger of Summit Strategies we now are in a position with the funding to to be at both Salem and in Washington DC we know that the Confederated Tribe and their lobbyist is going to be helping work with us and we'll keep you apprised as it goes on but but the things that are happening are going on now is there are hearings going on all over the state the next one is in Eugene talking about this transportation issue and it involves the key legislators that are going to be crafting this package and carrying it and we're working with them on a daily basis to make sure that you know you don't want to not be in that package when it's written and so that's that is absolutely a committed goal and so you know there's never a guarantee in legislation or will it happen but we're working far and wide to to do that and and to have your lobbyists spend your money effectively and wisely and and so we really appreciate the continued extraordinary partnership of this project
You know one thing I might add Dave and when you talk about everybody working on one partnership to one goal being a member of on the Board of Directors of the League of Oregon Cities realizing there's probably three four projects right now around the state that are significant everybody will admit at the LOC that the Newburg Dundee bypass is the number one significant project in the state of Oregon but one of the legislative priorities the top legislative priority from the League of Oregon Cities which is about 326 member cities and officials is to ODOT and is the legislature is that you have to complete the funding any transportation package any existing project that has not been completed that funding should go to those projects before ODOT considers taking on new projects because the concern of all the cities in the state of Oregon is the more projects that under pressure that ODOT decides to start the more projects we're gonna have that are never gonna be completed and we don't want to put the Newburg Dundee bypass into that project where it's a project that just doesn't have any loses its momentum because there's so many other things so that is also the cities that is a priority of the cities is to complete all the major renovations and one of the top identified one was the Newburg Dundee bypass for the cities so
Thank you
Thank you David
Thanks
Okay, we have any thing else any other comments on the on the bypass on the bypass or anybody like to make any comments Okay, hearing none then let me my tablet went to sleep let me get it back up Okay, hearing none then what we will do is we will move on to our second under the joint work session with Yamhill County is the city county street transportation improvements and I don't know who Martha do you want to kick that who do we have planned to kick that one off do you I I don't see Mike here to speak on anything
No, and the intent was it's just a conversation between the counselors and the commissioners
Okay, so that being said you know as the commission is aware and I'll start this off by Yam from Yamhill County that several of the street improvements that was passed in our bond levy actually have to do with roads that are currently maintained by the county that are basically urban streets and they will be built to urban street standards and at that time the jurisdiction of those streets will be changed from the county to the city because they are actually functioning as urban streets but they're not designated as urban streets a good one is Hill Hill Road another one's part of Old Sheridan Highway those are actually under the jurisdiction of the county right now as part of our bond levy that the citizens of McMinnville passed for the improvements of Hill Road from Baker Creek Road to Second Street and those parts of Old Sheridan Road over the Cozine Improvement and improvement up 99W once those are improved then the city will take over we'll have a jurisdictional what they call jurisdictional transfer and those street those roads or those services will be transferred from Yamhill County to the city of McMinnville and they'll become part of our city grid so that being said what I'd like to do is turn it over to either Stan or Mary talk about other city maybe county road projects or county road projects that will be of importance to the to the city
Well, Commissioner Primicich is liaison to Public Works and we have a very ambitious improvement plan that's going on this summer
Yes, we fortunately or unfortunately with the drop in oil prices that we experienced earlier it was possible for us to get a very very good bid on asphalt and so consequently we usually make up a large list of transportation projects that we're gonna work on and then we a lot of those are alternates Well, we were fortunate enough that there are no alternates we're doing them all so our Public Works crew are working tremendously hard on a variety of different roads and streets that we are completing either doing significant gravel upgrades but primarily we're doing overlays on a lot of gravel roads this year and then doing some some top surface on several others in connection with we did move forward to convey those roads to the city of McMinnville we've but just because we are such good neighbors
Here we go
John Phelan our Public Works Director went out and mowed along Baker Creek and along Hill Road and over on Old Sheridan Road just to make sure that we
Totally appreciate it, we appreciate it
We transferred those to you in
In good shape, in best condition
Best possible shape but no we we do want to work very hard to make certain that there is good connectivity as we've stated earlier transportation is so critical to economic development but just to the movement of our citizens around the county and we're very aware of the obligation we have to make certain that happens and I will say right now if anybody ever has an issue with any county road please don't hesitate to call me because I know John wants to hear about it John Phelan is our Public Works Director you won't find very many people who are more customer oriented than John we got him out of the private sector and he's he's just really really does care about if you have an issue he's gonna be right out there he doesn't talk to you on the phone he gets in his pickup and he goes out there he talks to you he looks at the problem he says well we can do something about this and he does it I mean it's just so we have those kind of people it's like Mike Brand over at our planning department it's not a question of oh gee we can't do that it's a well let's see how we can make that happen I mean that's the mentality so please if you ever run into an issue on a county road let us know but we will be working very closely to make sure that those projects that you're working on connect up well with what we have and that we have some very good transition there
Thank you Commissioner I think one thing that gets lost in this whole conversation we had a long conversation about the bypass and I think the one thing that gets lost I think the county does a real good job on is if you don't travel some of the county roads some of the back roads between Newburg and McMinnville very often or Salem and McMinnville the pressure on 99W between Newburg and Dundee is basically tearing the county roads apart the longer it is before the bypass is completed the more money the county and the cities around the county are gonna have to spend for a longer period of time trying to maintain those the county road standards and there's some of them if you look at the new intersections out at Keeney Road and what the county's done in some of those north Lafayette east to Carlton those are what county roads should look like unfortunately a lot of them aren't there yet I know Commissioner Primicich said they're getting there but the failure to provide major transportation plans is actually eating the county road system apart so so Stan congratulations on the work you've done
Mr. Mayor It's very important to recognize that the county has almost 800 miles of road far more than the state has believe me in this county of Yamhill County and 33 bridges and we are working hard we have one bridge right now that's closed we are really close to getting the the nod to get Palmer Creek repaired and reopened DeJonge is on the list to be replaced so but it is it's a it's a large large issue and if we do have the big one that everybody's talking about the infrastructure throughout everything from I-5 West is supposed to to fail we want to be ahead of that curve and we want to be able to get people around the county and so we are gonna be working really hard to make sure our roads are kept open for for everybody
I know one other thing the city's working on very strongly with ODOT and I I won't quote a price because I don't know it but when I heard it was unbelievable is the replacement of the three mile lane lane between McMinnville and the hospital if ODOT is working on that it's on the stiff now to replace I think by 2020 now has been moved back 2020 Martha that bridge I think we could probably build the whole west end of the bypass for what it's gonna cost to replace that bridge it replacing bridges or fixing bridges are very very expensive because when you're talking about building seismic standards nine and above you it's it's like you can go from from 6.5 to seven and it's quite a jump but when you go from a six or a seven to a 9.5 the cost astronomically increased so
Almost well actually it's more than double
It's more than double so just jumping that much so but I know the city does appreciate the work the county's done and the work they've done in keeping up Old Sheridan Road and those roads such as Hill Road both north and south that service the city and I will be glad when the city takes those or because technically they do operate as a urban road and not as a county road so
Mr. Mayor
Yes
I just want to again just thank the county for the work that they've done on this on the streets around around the county because I know in in years past it hasn't really been the case but it seems like in the last five six years it's been such a dramatic improvement in the quality of the roads I think the the one that really comes to mind in McMinnville in particular is the old Sheridan that the the change that you did on the bridge down there
Just down in the pedestrian
I know I got a lot of credit for that because it's in my ward but I had nothing to do with it I kept having and I was like
But you took the credit of course
Oh, of course yeah but just to make it you know clear the clear the air it's amazing how how what an improvement that is because that is really it's a it's a really a pedestrian corridor right there and I saw it just today
Somebody took out somebody took out 70 feet of guardrail
So good thing it's made of wood and not iron right because someone could have gotten hurt anyways it's it's just great to see that and I'm gonna give you a call because you said if you see any improvements it could be done
Please do
While the guys out mowing the the south side of Hill Road on the S curve the the weeds are getting pretty high on that so as you're coming northbound
You can't see
You can't see anything coming across that bridge and so unless it's a big box truck you don't know it's coming
That's between Alexandria and the fellows
Yeah
Right where that
Yeah, so it's on the west side in particular that it's just really tall you can't see as you're approaching that corner
You can't see the southbound, you can't see the southbound
And you usually like to wait they take one car at a time on that one And you usually like to wait, they get one car at a time on that one.
Today, or was that very recent? Because I know they.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, I saw yesterday too.
So I know, because that's on the list of.
Oh, I figured.
Place to be moved.
Okay, thank you.
I'll follow up on that, thank you.
Okay, do we have anything, do we have anything more to talk about transportation issues?
I just, I just have a question, just an update on our, our bus system and how that's moving forward and shelters and those types of things. I, I don't know that we've had a report for over a year now on, on how that all is taking hold.
That's also one of my areas.
Okay.
Stan? Yes, we are, in fact, we did, we're successful in receiving a grant to do an overall study of our transportation system, and especially within the city of McMinnville and city of Newburgh, where we actually have routes that we run. We have substantial connection to Salem, up to Tigard and Hillsborough and the Casino. So we do provide regular service to all of those entities. But the, within the city of McMinnville and Newburgh, we do have routes. And then we are, we do provide service for the elderly, the handicap, and that's a special transportation plan that we also, in fact, we are having, please Laura, help me, have you got that date in front of you? I think it's the 29th?
Twenty eighth, twenty eighth.
There will be a workshop, we're inviting stakeholders of our special transportation to come and share any gaps that we have in the service to them, to share any issues that they have that we might address. We do have a, a separate committee that is strictly dedicated to special needs. And we're going to be dealing with that on that 29th. And I, I got a little bit off the subject, but that's, that's very important and we really do care about providing those services. But the, the grant that we received will allow us then to do an overall scoping of what we currently have and how we can improve it, where we have shelters that we really don't need them and where we need shelters that we don't have. One of the things that happened, Commissioner Sterrett mentioned that as we go around to these, hold these meetings in the various cities, we've been able to identify a problem that we can relatively soon fix. And that was, one of the things came up in the city of Amity, first said, yeah, I was, the other day I saw this poor woman with her baby standing out there waiting for a bus, it's pouring rain and she had no place to stand. We now have a shelter out there. And that was Commissioner Sterrett, that became her focus for the next few days, making sure that we got a, a shelter out there. So, we, we do try and be responsive. But anyway, as we complete this overall review of what we're doing, you're going to see some significant changes, going to see a lot of maps at those, at those shelters, you're going to see, we're going to have a better website, we're going to have better signage. So it, we are upgrading, but we didn't want to start putting money out until we did this study to make sure that we're spending that money appropriately. So, I hope that, that's the long answer to a short question.
I have a question, question, Commissioner. I know a few years ago, or maybe probably more than a few years ago at my age, there was a lot of issues that brought, were brought about, some of the shelters and the benches that went in the shelters weren't either ADA accessible or they, they weren't built to where they should be. I've noticed driving around McMinnville specific, specifically that it appears that there's still some shelters that don't have any seats in at all, some I've seen have a couple of seats that are pretty wobbly. Has the city, or the county lady done actually an inventory, has Public Works done inventory of those shelters and what shelters need improvement, what shelters need work?
That's all.
Is part of that study?
That's coming out of this study. We, again, like I say, we had some issues, we hired a new transportation person and she's doing a tremendous job, but she wanted to get this study done, that's why she wrote for the grant. And we will be tackling those, Mr. Yoder's on our, on the commission and we will be tackling those as soon as we get the results of that study, which should be sometime here in the next three to four months.
Okay.
And Counselor Hill, just to update you, I do serve on the advisory committee, but one of the things that's happened is between the, the departure of the previous director and the hiring of the new one, the advisory committee kind of went defunct for about a year, a year and a half. And we are just now getting back and getting reorganized. In fact, we have a meeting here the end of this month, in two weeks. And so we're just trying to get reorganized and get acquainted with the new manager of the, of the best transportation of YCTA. And so, I haven't had anything to update you with because I've been in the dark too.
Well, as, as we talked about, you know, any of our partners out there, we welcome them once, once that committee's back up and going and the, the new director that, we welcome them to come here because I think we get a lot of input from constituents within our wards about transportation and thinking of it as city and not county. And, and so having that partnership and having that flow of knowledge and information would be helpful and welcomed.
I think it's important to, to also mention another thing that, which is relatively new within the last year, and that is something that's available to all of those who are Medicaid recipients or on the Oregon Health Plan in the county, and that's the non-emergent medical transportation, which is state funds that are, go through the, the CCO, which basically just says if you need help getting to a doctor's appointment or to a medical appointment of some kind, doesn't have to be an emergency, but the transportation is, is door to door and it's, it's, it's pretty comprehensive. So it's been an extremely expensive program because the need is, was a whole lot more, the utilization was a whole lot more than they thought it was going to be. But just in case anybody's asking, you know, in addition to dial a ride, you can actually get transportation or doctor's appointment.
That's amazing.
That's great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Laura?
I would just like to add that if you do see something wrong with the shelter that needs repair, we do have a contract with someone to make repairs or improvements in the shelters. Or if there is a complaint from a constituent about the service, they can contact us. Cynthia Thompson is our transit manager. You don't need to wait for this planning process. There is a contact at the, at the county that complaints or concerns can be voiced to. So we will address those as they come up.
Okay, thank you Laura.
Thank you.
Good info. Kevin?
Yes, just a couple of comments. I've used the system pretty regularly, it's been a while since I've used it and I'll explain why, but.
The non-emergent medical ones?
No, just the, just the transit. So I, I work in Salem and parking is a drag in Salem and driving there is no fun. So I'm like, hey, I could just get on the bus. And if, the, the times that it's worked out, it's been wonderful. And I, and I've really enjoyed the trip and just been able to read a book and, because the police usually get upset when I do that while I'm driving to Salem, so it's nice to have somebody else drive.
I'll tell you.
Yeah, I know. But one of the issues I've had recently, and I've tried to get on, I usually get on at, I ride my bike over to Buy Mart and then I wait for the bus there. But if there's two bikes on the bus, I can't get on. And there's no place for me to lock my bike out. So there's been a couple of times where I've done that and I've had to drive, ride my bike all the way back home and get in my car and, and follow the van, the bus all the way to Salem. So if there was an alternative to that, it used to be until recently, you could, however many bikes are on, you just get on the bus with your bike and that was okay. But that, that rules changed. And so it's made it, it's made it impossible for me to, because once I get to, to West Salem, I have to bike to my office. And the other issue too is the schedule. So it gets there, you know, I start at eight o'clock and I know a lot of people do start their day at eight o'clock and it, it doesn't get me anywhere near eight o'clock. I'm either there at like eight forty or eight thirty and then, or get there well before, like at seven o'clock, like that. So, those are just a couple of the issues that I saw. As, as that vehicle is servicing this county to get people who might be working elsewhere, it's not getting you where you need to be at a time where you can actually start your job at eight o'clock.
Thanks. Thank you. Stan, are those kind of things, are those the kind of things they look at as part of this study that they're doing?
That will be a part of it, but you know, these incidents like somebody who needs to be at a certain place, looking at, is there another alternative? I don't, I don't know. But these are the kinds of issues that if, when we're out talking to people, we can go back and see, can we, is there something we can do about that right away and?
These are, I've raised these with the previous director many times and I never once got a response back. So, I'm glad we've hired a new director, it sounds like things.
We have and I will personally see that you get an answer one way or another. It may not be, it may not be the one you want, but it'll be an answer.
Even that would be, would be an improvement, so that'd be good. Thank you.
Do we have anything more to cover on transportation or street transportation? Does anybody in the audience have any question for you or the commissioners or the city or comments on the street and transportation improvements? If not, what I think we'll do is we will take off this agenda, we'll take the homeless update off since we did do that at the town hall session, unless somebody specifically who was not here earlier has any questions or comments regarding the homeless update. Okay, come on up, Elise.
I'm Elise Huey, I'm the executive director for the Housing Authority. And I just want to make a couple of comments I didn't earlier because I didn't think it was the time, but.
You're welcome to make them.
Good. I wanted to make a couple of updates on what we're doing locally for, for some of the homeless issues. Like Kathy said, we have a big need for the folks that are in front of the church with the level of services needed. And so even with the Gospel Rescue Mission, we saw a need that, you know, there's going to be some gaps. And there's going to be people that can't be served at the mission. And so, along with some community organizations, so Provoking Hope is a big one, that currently offers mentorship and they will do street outreach. So that's somebody to keep in mind if somebody is in need of some handholding and working through the different services. So we do have that, I heard that earlier. And then, so Provoking Hope, the Housing Authority, YCAP, the CCO and Health and Human Services have a community impact team that goes out on a regular basis to do street outreach so that you have a multidisciplinary team that's working together to try to meet with the folks. Of course, they, they've got to want to get help, but they have been successful, you know, getting a few people off the streets. There was one lady that actually handed over her heroin needle when they talked to her and then the next day entered treatment. So we have some really good success stories that have come out of that community impact team. So that's one of the things that's being done. If you have not been to one of the Peace and Community Together events, which is every, this Friday, I mean, this Thursday would be the third Thursday, sorry. I'm, I was on vacation last week and I'm in training this week, so I'm a little off on my dates. Somebody help me out? So anyway, this Thursday and every Thursday that time of the month.
This Thursday is going to be the second.
The second Thursday, okay, thank you. Every second Thursday from five to seven at Co-op Ministries, Peace and Community Together, and it's a joint effort by Hope on the Hill, Provoking Hope, Compass Center, which, which Remy was referring to, which is the one stop hopefully that we'll have for services in the future, the Housing Authority and Co-op Ministries, we've gotten together and so we have this event. And it's really an outreach event, so everybody gets fed that comes to the event. But it's, it's to really increase the awareness of homelessness in our communities. So we have people that come from the public and there's always live entertainment and they come from the public and they're able to sit down with a homeless neighbor and just, just, just talk to them. And so we have service providers that are there, but they're not there in a formal capacity. So if I sit down and talk to somebody, they don't necessarily know I'm from the Housing Authority, but if I hear in housing issue come up, I can go, you know, and, and then provide them some resources because I always carry them with me. So it's just another way that we're providing resources to our community members that are in need. I think one thing that we need to keep in mind is that our downtown visible population is just a very small example of our overall population. And what we have found in the past is about 40% of what we count at the homeless count in January is children under the age of 18. So, you know, in, in addition to outreach into that population through the various efforts, the population that is on the street takes up a lot of resources because those folks are in and out of emergency rooms, in and out of the jails and those kind of things. One thing the Housing Authority has done is we have dedications of housing vouchers set aside for, we work with different entities with those. And so we can get referrals from YCAP, from Yamhill County Corrections, from Yamhill County Health and Human Services, from Yamhill County Veterans. And then we have a program with DHS for family unification. So those folks can refer folks to us to get up on the list for vouchers so that they have a priority, so that there are situations where we don't have to have people in corrections being released onto the streets. If they have the case management component on their side, then we'll help prioritize a voucher for them. So just wanted you to be aware of that. Another exciting thing that we have had happen recently is we were awarded 15 VASH vouchers. And what those are is it's a relationship between the Department of Housing and Urban Development and Department of Veterans Affairs. So we've been asking for them for years and we finally, you, you can't apply for them, you have to be asked to apply for them. And we were finally asked and we applied and we got 15. So we'll be rolling out that program this fall. And it's for homeless vets. And the referrals actually for that program will be coming from the Portland VA Medical Center. So if you know of anybody that might be a homeless veteran, they, if they go touch base with the Portland VA Medical Center, they can get referred back for that program. And that'll be 15 specifically for that population. So I just wanted to make you aware of all those things that are going on for our homeless populations.
Okay, any questions or for Elise at all? Larry? Tilly?
Just 15 vouchers for homeless veterans?
Well, we already have the set aside, the fast track program with Yamhill County Veterans, that we've already, I think we're over 20 vouchers for that program because we hadn't gotten the VASH vouchers.
20 vouchers a month or 20 vouchers?
It's 15 vouchers for the first year. And it depends on what the allocation is from, you know, the federal government, because they've said that program's going away and then they, then they funded it again and apparently we're in this last funding cycle. So it just depends, once you have a program, sometimes you get more vouchers. But we were excited because it's 15 vouchers our community didn't have previously.
True, that is nice.
Yeah, so.
Well, my question to those vouchers, those 15 vouchers, the vouchers we have now, the 15 VASH vouchers, what does a voucher actually cover?
Yeah, what does it give?
And then for what period of time?
Oh, okay. So, so our, there are section eight vouchers, it's just a specialized program within the section eight program. And so there is no time limit once somebody gets a voucher. So basically, the amount of the voucher subsidy changes with the person's income. So if they come in at zero income, they don't have to pay anything. So it's 30% of their income that they pay and then we subsidize the differential to the private landlord. So it's a private landlord program. We put almost $9 million back into our local economy every year through this program. And there's, you know, most of our people that are served through this program are elderly or disabled or people, I mean, we do have some people that are working minimum wage jobs and hopefully that changes a little bit with the minimum wage increase, but, you know, just people struggling to get by. And so it can last as long as they're eligible for the program. And we actually have a homeownership component off of that too, where people, once they show that they're successful in the rental market, can actually use that voucher to help them purchase a home. So we're trying to move people to self-sufficiency.
Elise, one of the problems with the section eight vouchers is not, not the lack of voucher, but lack of.
Affordable housing.
Once they have that, so having a voucher might not necessarily mean they're going to get.
Yeah, we're finding that, that, you know, people are having a problem finding units. We have a tight rental market. Our voucher payment standards, which is the amount that people can afford, have increased recently quite greatly. And so it allows them a little more spending power. Again, there's not as many units on the ground. It's, it's interesting because we have a training this week and it's, it's for the housing choice voucher executive management portion. And my only point here is there's people there from around the nation, from Hawaii. And my only point here is there's people there from around the nation, from Hawaii, from Nevada, from California, Florida. The problem is nationwide. It's not just locally, it's not just in Oregon. We're all having a hard time utilizing vouchers. So definitely like Stan was talking, sorry, Commissioner Primus was talking about, you know, the need to look at our land use laws at every level to see if we can free up land so that we can build affordable housing. I mean, that, that is a big need because we need to get more affordable units on the ground, not just, you know, market rate, nice, high-end units. We need to really get more affordable units on the ground.
Thank you. I'm not sure commissioners if you're aware, but in response to both homelessness and the affordable housing crisis that McMinnville finds itself in, we, as a council, took on a series of educational seminars presented by the leaders in our, in the service communities that are servicing the homeless and low-income populations. And then the result of that was establishment of the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force and that came into effect in, in May. There was a resolution creating that task force in, in May. And that task force meets monthly and has short-term, long-term, or short-term, midterm and long-term goals. And the idea is that in the very immediate, we're going to start putting policy in place that will improve the affordable housing market in McMinnville.
Great. When do you guys meet?
We meet the second Wednesday of every month, right? It's tomorrow?
You're asking the wrong person.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Remy, very, and we're glad you're serving on that committee because definitely I all know it's a critical, how critical and vital it is for, I say, the whole, the whole nation. It just isn't a city issue, it's not a county issue, it's a whole nation issue. If we don't have any more of that, that'll take us to our last point in our joint session. That's the joint economic development efforts. I know Stan, if I'm not mistaken, you have economic development too?
Yes.
Is that true?
We, we needed to talk about Health and Human Services because that, Mary's...
Gee, I guess when you're chair, you can do things like that.
We do, we do distribute these responsibilities across the board, but you just happen to pick the ones that I have right now liaison to. But yeah, what you have, I know Jody put in front of you what she's doing here in McMinnville. It's quite obvious that one of the economic drivers for Yamhill County is what takes place in the city of McMinnville because this is where your greatest population is. But we have a lot of things going on throughout the county to attempt to drive economic development. And I mentioned earlier, I convened a meeting here a couple of weeks ago to develop a steering committee that, and Jody is serving on that. We've got Rural Development Initiative, Gary Stewart who's on that, we've got people from Newburgh, Dayton, Sheridan. We're trying to, I know Jody at the behest of the county three years ago spent a lot of time with 80 of our residents, was it five years ago, Laura? Thank you. Had 80 people on this committee and they met quite often over the course of a year and developed what they called the Grow Report. And a lot of those things have been done, but a lot of them have not. And this committee is going to be reviewing that along with a lot of new criteria for reaching out to get dollars. One of the problems we have in Yamhill County is we don't have any land or buildings. What do we have? One building in the county, Jody, that is adequate to go out and shop?
Well, we have, there's two large facilities in Sheridan, quite a bit activity around that. And then in Minnville, we have very limited facilities that are ready to go. There's one facility out on the Evergreen campus, the corporate side, that's still mired in a bit of legal issues. We have some very small facilities in the industrial park. I think today you heard about, there's going to be some new development in the industrial park based on a company that you're supporting with that effort. But yes, we have limited capacity of the building, buildings that we have. Three large lots in McMinnville, one is shovel-ready and then there's smaller lots throughout the county.
So again, when, when we're out trying to bring people to the county, it's, we're, we're very hampered by available land. Again, we get back to land use and buildings that are available for move-in. So that's an issue that we're going to be working with very diligently to see if we can prove that. But as I mentioned earlier, the three primary issues that came out of our initial meeting, what can we do to improve the outlook for economic development in Yamhill County? Transportation, affordable housing and workforce development. Transportation, obviously, getting goods and services in now. Affordable housing, if a company's going to move their plant here or expand here, they have to have a place for their workers to live and it's difficult anyplace anymore because there just aren't a lot of things that fit. What used to be a family wage job is changing rapidly because of the cost of housing. So, but we're going to be tackling these. I'm, I'm going to be at a meeting in August. USDA, and again, all these different bodies have significant dollars to spend. You just have to know where they are and, and how to go get them. So I'm, I'm going to be meeting with USDA down in North Bend in a couple of weeks. They've, they've got some significant dollars to spend on economic development programs for rural areas. That's, that's where the focus is, rural development. So I'm hoping to have much better information by the time I get back from there. Also, a thing that is of significant, significance to us and anybody who used to get tremendous revenue from forest harvest, I'll be tomorrow, I leave, go down to Roseburg to meet with representatives from Oregon Forest and from BLM. Yamhill County was one of the counties who joined with the ONC counties in a lawsuit against BLM because of their non-management of BLM lands and it's, it's a significant problem. Counties 10 years ago got $190 million from BLM from harvest. Last year, that was 12 million. We can't afford to do the job we're asked to do when the federal government owns 60% of the forest land in the United, in the state of Oregon and they represent 14% of the harvest in the state of Oregon. So that's, it's a significant issue. So it will help if we can get some of those dollars. It will provide us with dollars to do a lot of the things that we as a county government are supposed to be doing. And so you can't talk about economic development without talking about every facet of what we do. Our roads, our, you know, even the issue of getting buses that get people to where they need to be, when they need to be there. I'm, I'm also the liaison to veterans and I was up at the VA hospital a few weeks ago because we have veterans here that are handicapped. They need special services and they'll have an appointment at the hospital at seven in the morning, but the van that they send from the hospital to pick them up doesn't get here until 10:00 in the morning. So if we put them on a bus, they've got a two and a half hour ride with a lot of transfers and this is really pretty difficult. So these are issues, you know, there are a lot of things that we create our own problems by not being aware. And so that's what I'm trying to do is bring a greater awareness to things, just like this issue with you getting on, getting down there and not having a place to put your bike or if, if that's our morning run to Salem, why can't it be scheduled at a time that is a normal start of the workday time? I, I don't know that answer right now, but as the first time the issue's been brought forward, I'm going to find out. But it's, you know, a lot of things are just a lack of common sense in approaching solutions. So again, we are doing a lot, probably if, if we have, if we had a couple more Jodies in the county, we'd be doing a lot more. But we, we look to her for a lot of guidance because she's very involved. But thank you for what you do and we're just, the county's role in economic development is primarily opening doors, knocking down a few walls if possible. And just like we did today, I'm very excited about the four grants that we were able to fund for $164,000 that I think the return on that investment's going to be significant and the jobs that the, those dollars will create bring in a lot, a lot of taxes. And that's important for all of us because that's how we can afford to provide these other services.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, do you have anything else to add on economic development or anything?
No, I think, you know, as Commissioner Primus said, and I, I want to wrap up because I know everybody's anxious to, to probably get on the road, is that economic development pretty much hits every aspect of what the county does. And if you don't have a workforce and if you don't have people who are up, up to being able to be employable, one of the focuses of Health and Human Services this year is, is secure respite care and, and making sure that people who are chronically mentally ill are going to have a facility within the area to go to without having to be sent out of the area or to a state hospital. So there are so many different approaches to, to getting people employable and I have to say that our Health and Human Services Department is handling it and tackling it from every area. So something to be excited about, it's, it's, it's going on.
May I make something in addition to that? So I, I recently did a project with the Alzheimer's Society and AARP and they did a study about just the respite, how important that is. People who are taking care of their, the elderly, they're not able to work and make an income doing anything else. And so it's, it's significant amount of money that is being taken out of the economy to have people stay home and to treat and take care of their loved ones without any other assistance. So if we can get them help, they can then go back in the workforce and it just improves the economy that much more. So I, I know that the Alzheimer's Society has a statistic about it, I can't remember the exact numbers, but it was, it was astounding how much money is, is being lost through that kind of care.
You know, since we've been here for about two and a half hours, I know we were going to have a guest from SEDCOR also, they weren't able to make it and Jody and I talked a little bit and I was going to have Jody do a little presentation, talk a little about the relationship with SEDCOR. But being that we've been here about two and a half hours now, I would like to bring up, and Jody's going to send it to the city staff to make sure all the counselors get it. Jody did bring with us tonight, basically what she gave out at the council meeting, but the, the table on the back, the MEDP 2016 Retention and Recruitment Activity Report has been updated as of a 7/11 and I have some really updated figures on that table on especially as far as the total capex. And so what I've asked Jody to do is get that to staff and so the staff can send that out to all the counselors so we will have a list. And if you have your old one and compare it, you will see it's quite substantial. And I think one of the last things is economic development I do want to bring up is, is I just want to make it very sure that the commissioners know that they can't take Jody from us as much as they would like to, that she is chained to, chained to her office and chained to her chair.
I, I, I do recognize that. I did want to thank you for mentioning SEDCOR. The, this county does have a contract with SEDCOR to assist in bringing players to the table to see if we can't bring some businesses here. And Jody worked very, very closely with AJ. We did get an enterprise zone created in the West Valley for the purpose of helping to develop that and that was done with the help of SEDCOR. They are really great partners and they are working hard to get some exposure for Yamhill County. Again, one of the problems is facilities, if you do get somebody interested, what do you have to offer? And that's where we are really going to start focusing our efforts to be able to give them the right answer.
Thank you, Stan. I think economic development, like homeless, like transportation, like anything else we talked about, economic development, there's so many different partners that are involved in economic development in Yamhill County. And I, I don't want anybody in the audience to forget that even though Jody is actually the executive director of MEDP McMinnville Economic Development Partnership, economic development is critical to the whole county, whether it be Yamhill County, whether it be the city of McMinnville, whether the city, city of Newburgh, or even the small rural cities like Sheridan, Willamina, Amity. I think that's one of those partnerships that we need to continue to build on from an economic development and make sure that all the players, the cities, the counties are on the same track because what's good for McMinnville is good for the other cities and is good for the county. What's good for the county is good for McMinnville and the other cities. So I think that's another partnership that over, I think it's started taking the right direction over the next few years. I'd like to see that stepped up and have a more robust relationship of all the players in the county for economic development. So Stan, I thank you very much for your comment, for your comments on that. Is there anybody else who would like to say anything tonight on anything we covered in our joint session? If not, counselors, we only have our advice and information items left, but I think we can do those and being the fact that we have been here since 6:00 PM and it's now 8:30. If nobody has anything else to come in front, in front of us and I'll ask the city manager, she has anything else to bring up?
Nothing.
Okay. Is there anything else? Martha, you rose, you got everything out regarding the LOC conference to everybody and Martha, I think, and Martha, you put your email out regarding the attendance at the LOC conference. And I'd attest, since it is in Salem, I would encourage all the counselors that can, if they can get even over there for two of the days or a day. Last year, we had a very good turnout at the LOC conference in Bend. This year, we're fortunate because it's in Salem, downtown Salem, is that as many counselors as possible attend, look at the agenda and attend some of the LOC sessions because that's where you really get to talk to people from other cities, other city councils, other committees with the city and really learn about how other cities are doing things. So if we don't have anything else, meeting adjourned.
Just like that.